Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, honorable members of the 19th Congress. The inaugural session will promptly begin at 10:00 AM. May we request everybody to take their respective seats. Thank you, your honors. Honorable members of the House of Representatives, today is the 4th Monday of July 2022. The Constitution mandates that Congress convenes once every year on the 4th Monday of July to commence its regular session. Pursuant to establish parliamentary rules and practice, I hereby call the first regular session of the 19th Congress order. Please rise for the singing of the Philippine National Anthem to be led by Ms. Carla Isada of Tingog Partilis. Honorable members of the House of Representatives, today is the 4th Monday of July 2022. The Constitution mandates that Congress convenes once every year on the 4th Monday of July to commence its regular session. Pursuant to establish parliamentary rules and practice, I hereby call the first regular session of the 19th Congress order. Please rise for the singing of the Philippine National Anthem to be led by Ms. Carla Isada of Tingog Partilis.
(Singing)
Honorable members of the House of Representatives, today is the 4th Monday of July 2022. The Constitution mandates that Congress convenes once every year on the 4th Monday of July to commence its regular session. Pursuant to establish parliamentary rules and practice, I hereby call the first regular session of the 19th Congress order. Please rise for the singing of the Philippine National Anthem to be led by Ms. Carla Isada of Tingog Partilis.
(Singing)
Please remain standing for the doxology to be performed by Ms. Jonah Carmely B. Calibuso.
Father in heaven, teach me, I pray, to walk as thy witness on earth. Strengthen my spirit and grant me the faith to serve as the Savior would serve. Let me be thy guide to the wanderer by night, compass and guide to the seeker. Let thy love shine in me, teach me to be an example of the believers. Where there is sorrow, help me impart the hope and the comfort of truth. Where there is suffering, open my heart to do as the Savior would do. Let me be thy guide to the wanderer by night, compass and guide to the seeker. Let thy love shine in me, teach me to be an example of the believers. Where there is sorrow, guide down my hand to do as the Savior would give. Where there is fear, give me courage to stand and live as the Savior would live. Let me be thy guide to the wanderer by night, compass and guide to the seeker. Let thy love shine in me, teach me to be an example of the believers.
Before we proceed, we would like to acknowledge the presence of the Vice President of the Republic of the Philippines, Her Excellency Sara Zimmerman Duterte. Welcome to the House of Representatives. The Deputy Secretary General of the Legislative Operations Department will now call the roll of members of the House of Representatives elected from legislative districts apportioned among the provinces, cities and municipalities, and partilis organizations in alphabetical order.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives, national capital region, city of Caloocan, 1st District, Honorable Oscar G. Malapitan, 2nd District, Honorable Mary Mitzi L. Cahayon Uy, 3rd District, Honorable Dean Asistio, City of Las Pinas, Loan District, Honorable Camille A. Villar, City of Makati, 1st District, Honorable Romolo Kid Peña Jr., 2nd District, Honorable Luis N. Campos Jr., City of Malabon, Loan District, Honorable Josephine Veronique J. R. Lacson Noel, City of Mandaluyong, Loan District, Honorable Neptali M. Gonzalez II, City of Manila, 1st District, Honorable Ernesto M. Dionisio Jr., 2nd District, Honorable Rolando M. Valeriano, 3rd District, Honorable Joel R. Chua, 4th District, Honorable Edward Vera Perez Maceda, 5th District, Honorable Erwin C. Teng, 6th District, Honorable Bienvenido M. Abante Jr., City of Marikina, 1st District, Honorable Marjorie Ann A. Theodoro, 2nd District, Honorable Stella Luz A. Kimbo, City of Manila, Loan District, Honorable Jaime R. Fresnedi, City of Navotas, Loan District, Honorable Tobias Reynold M. Tianco, City of Paranyaki, 1st District, Honorable Edwin L. Olivares, 2nd District, Honorable Gus S. Tambunting, Pasay City, Loan District, Honorable Antonino G. Calixto, Pasig City, Loan District, Honorable Roman T. Romolo, Quezon City, 1st District, Honorable Juan Carlos Arjo C. Ataidé, 2nd District, Honorable Ralph Wendell P. Tulfo, 3rd District, Honorable Franz S. Pumarin, 4th District, Honorable Marvin D. Rilio, 5th District, Honorable Patrick Michael D. Vargas, 6th District, Honorable Marivic C. Pilar, City of San Juan, Loan District, Honorable Isabel Maria G. Zamora, City of Taguig, 1st Consular District, Pateros, Loan District, Honorable Ricardo S. Cruz Jr., City of Taguig, 2nd Consular District, Loan District, Honorable Amparo Maria J. Zamora, City of Venezuela, 1st District, Honorable Rex Gachalian, 2nd District, Honorable Eric M. Martinez, Region 1, Ilocos Region, Ilocos Norte, 1st District, Honorable Ferdinand Alexander A. Marcos, 2nd District, Honorable Angelo Marcos Barba, Ilocos Sur, 1st District, Honorable Ronald V. Singson, 2nd District, Honorable Christine Singson Mihan, La Union, 1st District, Honorable Francisco Paulo P. Ortega the 5th, 2nd District, Honorable Dante S. Garcia, Pangasinan, 1st District, Honorable Arthur F. Celeste, 2nd District, Honorable Marco Kowanko, 3rd District, Honorable Maria Rachel J. Arenas, 4th District, Honorable Christopher V. P. de Venecia, 5th District, Honorable Ramon N. Gueco Jr., 6th District, Honorable Marlin L. Primicias Agabas, Region 2, Cagayan Valley, Batanes, Loan District, Honorable Siriaco B. Gato Jr., Cagayan, 1st District, Honorable Ramon C. Nolasco Jr., 2nd District, Honorable Baby Eileen Vargas Alfonso, 3rd District, Honorable Joseph Giorgio L. Lara, Isabella, 1st District, Honorable Antonio Tony Pett T. Albano, 2nd District, Honorable Ed Christopher S. Go, 3rd District, Honorable Ian Paul L. D., 4th District, Honorable Joseph S. Tan, 5th District, Honorable Faustino Michael Carlos T. D. the 3rd, 6th District, Honorable Faustino Ino A. D. the 5th, Nueva Viscaya, Loan District, Honorable Luisa Lauren Cuarezma, Quirino, Loan District, Honorable Midi N. Kua, Region 3, Central Luzon, Aurora, Loan District, Honorable Romel T. Angara, Bataan, 1st District, Honorable Geraldine B. Roman, 2nd District, Honorable Albert S. Garcia, 3rd District, Honorable Maria Angela S. Garcia, Bulacan, 1st District, Honorable Dani A. Domingo, 2nd District, Honorable Augustina Dominique C. Pancho, 3rd District, Honorable Lorna C. Silverio, 4th District, Honorable Linabel Ruth R. Villarica, 5th District, Honorable Ambrosio C. Cruz Jr., 6th District, Honorable Salvador A. Plato, City of San Jose del Monte, Loan District, Honorable Florida Rita P. Robes, Nueva Isia, 1st District, Honorable Michael Angela B. Swan Singh, 2nd District, Honorable Joseph Gilbert F. Violago, 3rd District, Honorable Rosana Ria V. Vergara, 4th District, Honorable Emerson D. Pasqual, Pampanga, 1st District, Honorable Carmelo John B. Lazatín the 2nd, 2nd District, Honorable Gloria Macapagal Arroyo, 3rd District, Honorable Aurelio Dong D. González Jr., 4th District, Honorable Anna York P. Bondok, Tarlac, 1st District, Honorable Jaime D. Kowanko, 2nd District, Honorable Christian Tel A. Yak, 3rd District, Honorable Noel Bong N. Rivera, Zambales, 1st District, Honorable Jefferson F. Conghun, 2nd District, Honorable Doris E. Maniquis, Region 4 A. Calabarzon, Batangas, 1st District, Honorable Eric R. Buahin, 2nd District, Honorable Jervil R. Luistro, 3rd District, Honorable Maria Teresa V. Coliantes, 4th District, Honorable Leanda B. Bolilia, 5th District, Honorable Mario Vittorio Marvi A. Mourinho, 6th District, Honorable Ralph G. Rector, Cavite, 1st District, Honorable Ramon Jolo B. Revilia the 3rd, 2nd District, Honorable Lani Mercado Revilia, 3rd District, Honorable Adrian J. C. Advincula, 4th District, Honorable Elpideo F. Barzaga, 5th District, Honorable Roy M. Loyola, 6th District, Honorable Antonio A. Ferrer, 8th District, Honorable Anniela Bianca D. Tolentino, Laguna, 1st District, Honorable Marie Renee Ann Lourdes G. Matibag, 2nd District, Honorable Ruth Mariano Hernández, 3rd District, Honorable Loreto S. Amante, 4th District, Honorable Maria Jamina Catherine B. Agarao, City of Binyan, Loan District, Honorable Marlin Len B. Alonte, City of Calamba, Loan District, Honorable Cherise Ann C. Hernández Alcantara, City of Santa Rosa, Loan District, Honorable Dan S. Fernandez, Quezon, 1st District, Honorable Wilfrido Mark M. Enverga, 2nd District, Honorable David J. J. C. Suárez, 3rd District, Honorable Reinante U. Arrogancia, 4th District, Honorable Keith Mika Attorney Mike D. L. Tan, Rizal, 1st District, Honorable Michael John R. Duavit, 2nd District, Honorable Emigdio P. Tanwatko the 3rd, 3rd District, Honorable Jose Arturo S. Garcia Jr., 4th District, Honorable Juan Fidel Felipe F. Nograles, City of Antipolo, 1st District, Honorable Roberto V. Puno, 2nd District, Honorable Romeo M. Acop, Mima Ropa, Marin Duque, Loan District, Honorable Lord Alan J. Q. Velasco, Occidental Mindoro, Loan District, Honorable Leodi F. Tariela, Oriental Mindoro, 1st District, Honorable Arnan C. Panaligan, 2nd District, Honorable Alfonso V. Umalí Jr., Palawan, 1st District, Honorable Edgardo L. Zalvame, 2nd District, Honorable Se C. Álvarez, 3rd District, Honorable Edward S. Hagadorn, Romblón, Loan District, Honorable Eleandro Jesús F. Madrona, Region 5, Bicol Region, Albay, 1st District, Honorable Edsel C. Lagman, 2nd District, Honorable Joey Sarte Salceda, 3rd District, Honorable Fernando T. Cabredo, Camarines Norte, 1st District, Honorable Josefina B. Talliado, 2nd District, Honorable Rosemary C. Panotes, Camarenis Sur, 1st District, Honorable Chiyoshi Anthony G. Oribata, 2nd District, Honorable Luis Raymond L. Ray F. Villafuerte Jr., 3rd District, Honorable Gabriel H. Bordado Jr., 4th District, Honorable Arnie B. Fuentebelia, 5th District, Honorable Miguel Luis R. Villafuerte, Catanduanes, Loan District, Honorable Yolojio R. Rodriguez, Masbate, 1st District, Honorable Ricardo T. Co., 2nd District, Honorable Olga Ara T. Co., 3rd District, Honorable Wilton Tonton T. Co., Sorssagon, 1st District, Honorable Marie Bernadette G. Escudero, 2nd District, Honorable Manuel L. Fortez Jr., Region 6, Western Visayas, Aklan, 1st District, Honorable Carlito S. Marquez, 2nd District, Honorable Theodore Rico Jaresco Jr., Antike, Loan District, Honorable Antonio A. A. B. Legarda Jr., Capiz, 1st District, Honorable Emmanuel Tawik Beliones, 2nd District, Honorable Jane T. Castro, Gimaras, Loan District, Honorable Maria Lucille L. Nava M. D., Iluilo, 1st District, Honorable Janet L. Garin, 2nd District, Honorable Michael B. Goriseta, 3rd District, Honorable Lawrence R. Defensor, 4th District, Honorable Virginal G. Biron, 5th District, Honorable Raúl Boboy C. Tupas, City of Iluilo, Loan District, Honorable Julien Jam Baronda, Negroes Occidental, 1st District, Honorable Gerardo P. Valmayor Jr., 2nd District, Honorable Alfredo D. Maranyon the 3rd, 3rd District, Honorable Jose Francisco Kiko B. Benitez Ph.D., 4th District, Honorable Juliet Marie De Leon Ferrer, 5th District, Honorable Emilio Bernardino L. Yulo, 6th District, Honorable Mercedes K. Álvarez, City of Bacolod, Loan District, Honorable Greg G. Gasataya, Region 7, Central Visayas, Bohol, 1st District, Honorable Edgar M. Chato, 2nd District, Honorable Maria Vanessa C. Aumentado, 3rd District, Honorable Christine Alexi B. Chutor, Cebu, 1st District, Honorable Rea May A. Gulyas, 2nd District, Honorable Edsel A. Galeos, 3rd District, Honorable Pablo John F. Garcia, 4th District, Honorable Janis Z. Salimbangan, 5th District, Honorable Vincent Franco Duke D. Frasco, 6th District, Honorable Daphne A. Lagon, 7th District, Honorable Peter John D. Calderon, City of Cebu, 1st District, Honorable Rachel Margarit B. Delmar, 2nd District, Honorable Eduardo R. Rama, City of Lapulapu, Loan District, Honorable Maria Cynthia K. Chan, City of Mandawe, Loan District, Honorable Emery Lollipop Owano Dison, Negroes Oriental, 1st District, Honorable Joseline C. Limkaychong, 2nd District, Honorable Manuel T. Sagarbaria, 3rd District, Honorable Arnolfo Arnie A. Tevez Jr., Sikihor, Loan District, Honorable Zaldi S. Vilja, Region 8, Eastern Visayas, Biliran, Loan District, Honorable Gerardo Jerry Boy J. Espina Jr., Eastern Samar, Loan District, Honorable Maria Fe R. Abunda, Leite, 1st District, Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes, 2nd District, Honorable Lolita T. Javier, 3rd District, Honorable Anna Victoria Veloso Toazon, 4th District, Honorable Richard I. Gómez, 5th District, Honorable Carl Nicholas C. Carey, Northern Samar, 1st District, Honorable Paul Ruiz Daza, 2nd District, Honorable Harris Christopher M. Ongchuwan, Samar, 1st District, Honorable Stephen James T. Tan, 2nd District, Honorable Reynolds Michael T. Tan, Southern Leite, Honorable Luz Mercado 1st District, 2nd District, Honorable Christopher Son M. Yap, Region 9, Zamboanga Peninsula, Zamboanga del Norte, 2nd District, Honorable Glona G. Labad Labad, 3rd District, Honorable Adrian Michael A. Amatong, Zamboanga del Sur, 1st District, Honorable Divina Grace C. Yu, 2nd District, Honorable Jaisal Victoria C. Yu, City of Zamboanga, 1st District, Honorable Kimir Adanti Olaso, 2nd District, Honorable Manuel Jose Manix M. Dalipe, Zamboanga Cibugai, 1st District, Honorable Wilter Y. Palma, 2nd District, Honorable Antonietta R. Udella, Region 10, Northern Mindanao, Bukidnon Lone District Honorable Gerardo Jerry Boy J. Espina Jr. Eastern Samar. Lone District Honorable Maria Fe. R. Abunda. Leyte. First District Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes. Second District Honorable Lolita T. Javier. Third District Honorable Anna Victoria Veloso Toazon. Fourth District Honorable Richard I. Gómez. Fifth District Honorable Carl Nicolas C. Carey. Northern Samar. First District Honorable Paul Ruiz Daza. Second District Honorable Harris Christopher M. Ongchuwan. Samar. First District Honorable Stephen James T. Tan. Second District Honorable Reynolds Michael T. Tan. Southern Leyte. Honorable Luz Mercado First District. Second District Honorable Christopher Son M. Yap. Region Nine Zamboanga Peninsula. Zamboanga del Norte. Second District Honorable Glona G. Labadlabad. Third District Honorable Adrian Michael A. Amatong. Zamboanga del Sur. First District Honorable Divina Grace C. U. Second District Honorable Jaisal Victoria C. U. City of Zamboanga. First District Honorable Kimir Adanti Olaso. Second District Honorable Manuel Jose Manix M. Dalipe. Zamboanga Cibugai. First District Honorable Wilter Y. Palma. Second District Honorable Antonietta R. Udella. Region Ten Northern Mindanao. Bukidnon. First District Honorable Jose Manuel F. Alba. Second District Honorable Jonathan Keith T. Flores. Third District Honorable Jose Maria R. Zubiri Jr. Fourth District Honorable Larni L. Roque. Kamigin. Lone District Honorable Jordan Jesús M. Romualdo. Lanau del Norte. First District Honorable Mohamed Khalid Q. Dimaporo. Second District Honorable City Amina Q. Dimaporo. City of Iligan. Lone District Honorable Celso G. Regencia. Misamis Occidental. First District Honorable Jason P. Almonte. Second District Honorable Sancho Fernando F. Oaminal. Misamis Oriental. First District Honorable Christian S. Unabia. Second District Honorable Evgeny Vicente B. Emano. City of Cagayan de Oro. First District Honorable Lorden G. Suwon. Second District Honorable Rufus B. Rodríguez. Region Eleven Davao Region. Davao de Oro. First District Honorable Maria Carmen S. Zamora. Second District Honorable Ruel Peter Gonzaga. Davao del Norte. First District Honorable Pantallón D. Álvarez. Second District Honorable Alan Aldo R. Duhalí. Davao del Sur. Lone District Honorable John Tracy F. Cagas. City of Davao. First District Honorable Paolo Z. Duterte. Second District Honorable Vincent J. Garcia. Third District Honorable Isidro T. Ungab. Davao Occidental. Lone District Honorable Claudia P. Bautista. Davao Oriental. First District Honorable Nelson L. Dayanghiran. Second District Honorable Chino Miguel D. Almario. Region Twelve Socsergen. Cotobato. First District Honorable Joselito Joel S. Sacdalan. Second District Honorable Rudy S. Kawagdan DPA. Third District Honorable Maria Alana Samantha T. Santos. Sarangani. Lone District Honorable Steve Chongbian Solon. South Cotobato. First District Honorable Isidro B. Lumayag. Second District Honorable Peter P. B. Miguel. City of General Santos. Lone District Honorable Loreto B. Acharon. Sultan Kodarat. First District Honorable Princess Rian M. Sakaluran. Second District Honorable Horacio P. Swansing Jr. Bangsamoro Tony's Region in Muslim Mindanao. Basilan. Lone District Honorable Mujiv S. Hataman. Lanau del Sur. First District Honorable Yeur Rakpan A. Addyong. Second District Honorable Yaser Alonto Balindong. Magindanao. First District Honorable City Shahara A. Mastura. Second District Honorable Mohamed P. Paglas. Sulu. First District Honorable Samir A. Tan. Second District Honorable Munir N. Arbison Jr. Tawi Tawi. Lone District Honorable Dimzar M. Sally. Cordillera Administrative Region. Abra. Lone District Honorable Ching B. Bernos. Apayao. Lone District Honorable Eleonor C. Bulut Begtang. Benguet. Lone District Honorable Eric Goyp. City of Baguio. Lone District Honorable Mark O. Go. Ifogawa. Lone District Honorable Solomon R. Chungalawa. Kalinga. Lone District Honorable Alan Jesse C. Mangawang. Mountain Province. Lone District Honorable Maximo Y. Dalog Jr. Caraga Administrative Region. Agusan del Norte. First District Honorable C. S. Aquino II. Second District Honorable Dale B. Corvera. Agusan del Sur. First District Honorable Alfelito Alfell M. Bascub. Second District Honorable Edibong G. Plaza. Dinagat Island. Lone District Honorable Alan Uno B. Ecleo. Surigao del Norte. First District Honorable Francisco Jose Bingo F. Matugas II CPA Ceso LLB. Second District Honorable Robert A. Barber's. Surigao del Sur. First District Honorable Romeo S. Momo. Second District Honorable Johnny T. Pimentel. Partilist. One Patriotic Coalition of Marginalized Nationals Incorporated, One Pacman. Honorable Michael L. Romero Ph. D. Anguklod ng mga motorista ng Pilipinas, One Rider Partilist. Honorable Bonifacio L. Bosita. Anguklod ng mga motorista ng Pilipinas, One Rider Partilist. Honorable Ramon Rodrigo L. Gutierrez. Pagtibain at palaguin ang pangkabuhayang Pilipino, Four Peace, Honorable Jonathan Clement B. Abalos II. Four Peace Honorable Marcelino C. Libanan. Ang Asosasyon sang mangunguma nga Visaya Owa Mangunguma Incorporated, Ang Bis Owa. Honorable Lex Anthony Chris A. Colada. Abang Lingkod Incorporated, Abang Lingkod, Jose Joseph Stepan Karaps S. Paduano. A Bonapartilist, A Bono. Honorable Robert Raymond M. Estrelia. Anti-Crime and Terrorism Community Involvement and Support Incorporated, ACIS, Honorable Jeffrey Soriano. Anti-Crime and Terrorism Community Involvement and Support Incorporated, ACIS, Honorable Jocelyn P. Tulfo. Anti-Crime Terrorism Community Involvement and Support Incorporated, ACIS, Honorable Edvick G. Yap. Act Teachers Partilist, Act Teachers, Honorable Franz L. Castro. Agriculture Agricultural Sector Alliance of the Philippines, AGAP, Honorable Nikanor B. Breyones. Agimat ng masa, Agimat, Honorable Brian B. Revilia. Agri-agran na reforma para sa magsasakan ng Pilipinas, Agri, Honorable Wilbert T. Lee. Ako Bicol Political Party, ako Bicol, Honorable Raúl Angelo D. Bongalon. Ako Bicol Political Party, ako Bicol, Honorable Elizalde S. Co. Ako Visaya Partilist, ako Visaya, Honorable Sunny S. L. Lagon. Ako Ilukano ako, Honorable Rachel Singson. Alliance Organizations Networks and Associations of the Philippines Incorporated, Alona, Honorable Anna Maria Villarwa- Villaraza Suarez. Anwaray Partilist, Anwaray, Honorable Florencio G. Noel. Alagaan natin ang alagaan natin ating kalusugan, anak kalusugan, Honorable Ray Florence T. Reyes. Aliyansa ng mga mamamayang probinsyano, ang probinsyano, Honorable Alfred C. De Los Santos. Agrikultura ngayon gawing akma at tama, angat, Honorable Ronaldo S. Tamayo. Association of Philippine Electric Cooperatives, APEC, Honorable Sergio C. Dago. Abante Panggasinan Ilukano Party, API, Honorable Michael M. Warden. Bagong Generasyon, BH, Honorable Bernadette BH Herrera. Barangay Health Wellness Party, BHW, Honorable Angelica Natasha Co. Bicol Saro, Honorable Nicholas C. Enciso VIII. Citizens Battle Against Corruption, Cibac, Honorable Eduardo Brother Eddie C. Villanueva. CoopNATCO Partilist, CoopNATCO, Honorable Filimon M. Esparres. Construction Workers Solidarity, CWS, Honorable Tirso Edwin Gardiola. Dumper Philippines Taxi Drivers Association Incorporated, Dumper PTDA, Honorable Claudine Diana D. Bautista Lim. Duterte Youth Partilist, Duterte Youth, Honorable Drixie May S. Cardema. Gabriela Women's Party, Gabriela, Honorable Arline D. Brosas. Galing Sapuso Party, GP Party, Honorable Jose Gay G. Padhernos. Kabataan Partilist, Kabataan, Honorable Raúl Daniel A. Manuel. Kabalikat ng mamamayan, kabayan, Honorable Ron P. Salo. Kalinga Advocacy for Social Empowerment and Nation Building Through Easing Poverty Incorporated, Kalinga, Honorable Irene Gay F. Saulog. Kusug Tausug, Honorable Shurni A. Tan Tambut. LPGA LP-LPG Marketers Association Incorporated, LPGMA, Honorable Alan UT. Malasakit at Bayanihan Foundation Incorporated, Malasakit at Bayanihan, Honorable Anthony Rolando T. Gólez Jr. Manila Teachers Association and Loan Associations Incorporated, Manila Teachers, Honorable Virhilio S. Lacson. Marino Samahan ng mga siman Incorporated, Marino, Honorable Sandro L. Gonzalez. One Filipinos Worldwide Coalition Partilist, OFW, Honorable Marisa Delmar P. Magzino. Public Safety Alliance for Transformation and Rule of Law Incorporated, PATROL, Honorable Jorge PATROL Bustos. Puersan ng Bayan- Bayaning Athleta, PBA, Honorable Margarita Ignacia B. Nograles. Philippine Rural Electric Cooperatives Association Incorporated, Philrica, Honorable Presley C. de Jesus. Pinatatag na ugnayan para sa mga oportunidad sa pabahay ng masa, pinuno, Honorable Ivan Howard A. Ginto. Probinsyano ako, Honorable Rudis Caesar G. Farinhas I. Pusong Pinoy Partilist, Pusong Pinoy, Honorable Journey Jet V. Nisai. Social Amelioration and Genuine Intervention in Poverty, Sagip, Honorable Radante D. Marcoletta. Social Amelioration and Genuine Intervention in Poverty, Sagip, Honorable Carolyn L. Tanchai. Coalition of Associations of Senior Citizens in the Philippines Incorporated, Senior Citizens Partilist, Honorable Rodolfo Ompong M. Ordanes. Talino at galing ng Pinoy, TGP, Honorable Jose Bong J. Tevez Jr. Tingok Sinerangan Tingok, Honorable Yedda Marie K. Romualdes. Tingok Sinerangan Tingok, Honorable Jude A. Asidre. The Trade Union Congress Party, TUCP, Honorable Raymond Democrito C. Mendoza. Tutok Tuwin, Honorable Samuel S. Versosa Jr. Uswak Ilongo Party, Uswak Ilongo, Honorable James Jojo A. Ang Jr.
Raúl, dito siya sinasagot ng anak niya, pinapunta ka ng kanya. Mina sa page, malalaw, ang sira.
Ita lang, ito nun.
Ako dun, wala.
Nakasok-sok. Okay na? Di pa? Ilan lang sir, hirap na eh. Baka ma- may election tayo, baka ma- okay lang, okay lang. Mahirap eh.
Set natin 'yung president.
Paluwa naman tayo, paano pagawa tayo ng application eh di ba? Pakarta mo na lang, dapat nung isa pa lang, kinakarga na nila eh di ba? Dapat nga, pag dumarating sila, kaya check na eh, di ba? Meron na bagay na ba na? Ayan, oo, ay, dapat pa rin, prevent natin 'yun, sobra. Ay, napano sa salita tayo? Alerto, oo. 'Yun bibisita ba? Bibisita bang pumasok man member, kasi ngayon pare, this is already considered the whole lajunata, VIP oh. 10:40 pare, ang 10:40, almost 30 minutes eh. Pwede, ready eh. Pare, nakatim- nakatimbre naman pag VIP talaga. Tapos they should, ano, ahead of time, iyaan nila, consider. Pero hindi wala, natakang it schedule lang sa palibot. Ayan. Ay, puti po. Wala siya sa mga group, wala siya sa mga. Palibot, ayan, pamanabat tayo, pakarot sa atin. Kurul, kurul sila ngayon, pare. Sabat, hindi ka, anihirapan din sila mag-ano eh, lapat ng lapat. Gaya ng PS3, pero, pare, pag-ano naman sila, medyo lapat, kasi may lumalapit eh, kaya. Ano pare, pakalangan, si, ay, jok, kasi sa, ay. Di magbangga.
Mr. Presiding Officer, the roll call shows that 309 members responded to the call.
There being 309 members who responded to the call, the Chair declares a presence of a quorum. To ensure all the proceedings, the Chair designates the Honorable Manuel Jose Manic Semdalipe, Representative of the Second District of San Boa City, as the acting floor leader. Before we open the table for the nomination of candidates for the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives, let me state for the record that the House rules provides that the members who vote for the winning candidate for Speaker shall constitute the majority in the House, and they shall elect from among themselves the Majority Leader. The Minority Leaders shall be elected by the members of the minority. The House has already established a procedure for this, and the Supreme Court, in the case of Paguillat versus Alvarez, has already affirmed that the House has the power to determine the rules of its proceedings.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move that we now open the table for nominations for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives.
There is a motion to open the table for nominations for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Nominations for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives are now in order.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move that the distinguished representative from the First District of Ilocos Norte, the Honorable Ferdinand Alexander Araneta Marcos, be recognized to make his nomination.
The distinguished representative from the First District of Ilocos Norte, the Honorable Ferdinand Alexander A. Marcos, is recognized.
Mr. Presiding Officer, with unity at the core of the government as our shared vision for the next six years, the House of Representatives requires, now more than ever, a leader that embodies inclusivity, possesses unquestionable competency, and feels genuinely for the people we are all duty-bound to serve. Someone who is of the belief that, as the dust has settled from these elections, the time for politics must come to an end and public service must begin. As such, among the distinguished members of this august chamber, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes is the most qualified to lead the House of Representatives to accomplish this formidable task. In his 12 solid years of legislative experience, he is best known as a consensus builder, regarded with great affection and respect by most, if not all, members of this institution, no matter where they are on the political spectrum. We know that it is not an easy feat for a person to listen to and consolidate support from more than 300 elected officials, all of whom are leaders in their own right. Yet Representative Romualdes seems to have found this balance. He values everyone's opinion and exudes the charm to get everyone to voluntarily and conscientiously work together towards a common goal. Because of this positive trait, he, along with other members of the 18th Congress, were able to usher with expediency the two critical Bionihan bills in the House of Representatives during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, just when the country needed these laws the most. Representative Romualdes's competence is far beyond dispute. His professional experience as a lawyer and banking executive allow him to take an analytical and corporate approach to economic issues that require suitable legislation. With him as the House Majority Leader, Congress was able to pass laws supportive of economic growth, such as the CREATE Law, as well as measures amending the Public Service Act and the Foreign Investments Act of 1991. Such accomplishments have shown that he is able to strike a healthy equilibrium between economic interests and public welfare. Moreover, Representative Martin Romualdes is well-loved by the people of the First District of Leyte. He is popular for his meaningful community programs and initiatives that positively impact the lives of many of his constituents. Should he be the next leader of the House of Representatives, we can only expect with much enthusiasm that his genuine interest and compassion for people will be reflective of the facets that the 19th Congress hopes to possess. Much has been said regarding the familial relations of Representative Romualdes to the President, but for reasons I have stated prior, one can truly ascertain that his qualifications are beyond sufficient to lead us to great heights. To say that he has not worked his way up through various positions in Congress would be a grave injustice to the effort he has put into his role throughout his 12 years as a legislator. Consequently, it is through this rationale that I put forth the nomination of the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as the 24th Speaker of the House of Representatives for the 19th Congress of the Republic of the Philippines. Thank you.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move that the distinguished representative from the Sixth District of Batangas, the Honorable Ralph G. Recto, to be recognized to second the nomination.
The distinguished representative from the Sixth District of Batangas, the Honorable Ralph G. Recto, is recognized.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Mr. Presiding Officer, my dear colleagues, it is my privilege and honor to second the nomination of the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes of the First Legislative District of Leyte as Speaker of the House of Representatives of the 19th Congress. May I submit for insertion into the records the copy of my manifestation, but let me quote excerpts from it. Representative Romualdes can shepherd the bills that can help our country as skillfully as he can stop the ones that harm our people. He knows the policies that need to be crafted and the pragmatism to get them passed. I am confident that with him, a constitutionalist at the helm, he will keep the plenary a hospitable space for all opinions while keeping the conveyor belt of laws moving. In these trying times, he is the leader we need who could marshal our collective will and wisdom in tackling the brave and bold things that must be done. It is therefore my honor to work with him as our Speaker. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move that the distinguished representative from the Third District of Davao City, the Honorable Isidro T. Ungab, be recognized to second the nomination.
The distinguished representative from the Third District of Davao City, the Honorable Isidro T. Ungab, is recognized.
Mr. Presiding Officer, it is my honor to second the nomination of the Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives in the 19th Congress. He is very much qualified, our former Majority Floor Leader in the 18th Congress, and it is with pride and honor that I second this nomination. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move that the distinguished representative from the First District of Antipolo City, the Honorable Roberto V. Puno, be recognized to second the nomination.
The distinguished representative from the First District of Antipolo City, the Honorable Roberto V. Puno, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the officers and members of the National Unity Party, it is my esteemed privilege and honor to second the nomination of the distinguished gentleman from the First Legislative District of Leyte, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes, as the Speaker of the House of Representatives. Mr. Presiding Officer, I have known the nominee Congressman Romualdes since 2007, when we both entered into the halls of Congress as neophyte congressmen of the 14th Congress. I know him to be a man of intelligence, a man of integrity, a man of industry. Our nation needs someone who is familiar with the pulse of the nation and with the rigors and adversities of leadership. It is my humble submission that Honorable Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes is best suited to undertake the role of Speaker of the 19th Congress. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer. Thank you.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move that the distinguished representative from the Low District of Las Pinas, the Honorable Camille A. Villar, be recognized to second the nomination.
The distinguished representative from the Low District of Las Pinas City, the Honorable Camille A. Villar, is recognized.
Mr. Presiding Officer, it is with great honor, on behalf of the Nationalista Party, that I second the nomination of the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes of the First Legislative District of Leyte as the Speaker of the House of Representatives of the 19th Congress. Representative Romualdes is a dedicated public servant who champions the welfare of the Filipino people, a statesman who preserves the integrity and unity of this institution, a leader whose ultimate vision is the greatness of this nation. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move that the distinguished representative from the Second District of Ilocos Sur, the Honorable Christine Singson Mihan, be recognized to second the nomination.
The distinguished representative from the Second District of Ilocos Sur, the Honorable Christine Singson Mihan, is recognized.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the Nationalist People's Coalition Party, I second the nomination of the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes of the First Legislative District of Leyte as Speaker of the House of Representatives. As we usher in the 19th Congress, we would be fortunate to have at the helm a man who has proven himself a reliable captain and navigator in what has been and continues to be one of the most turbulent periods in our country. The Honorable Romualdes maneuvered these uncharted waters with skill and grace, exhibiting a sublime knowledge of the law, a political acumen worthy of his family pedigree, and an unfappable and genial nature that served as a bomb to flaring and fraying tempers in such troubled times. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move that the distinguished representative from the TUCP Partelis, the Honorable Raymond Democrito C. Mendoza, be recognized to second the nomination.
The distinguished representative from the TUCP Partelis, the Honorable Raymond Democrito C. Mendoza, is recognized.
Mr. Speaker, as it has been my distinct, rare, and privilege to serve six distinguished speakers, now onto my seventh, with much pride personally, on behalf of the sixteen-strong PCFI Partelis Coalition Foundation Incorporated, under the strong leadership of our leader Congressman Zaldeco, I, we gladly second the nomination of Honorable Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes of the First District of Leyte to be our Speaker of the House of the Representatives of the 19th Congress. The track record of Representative Romualdes in both private and public sector is unblemished. His performance as a Majority Leader, and we know this by heart, has both sterling and a highest caliber. In these trying times, pandemic and all, the Partelis Coalition has full faith that Honorable Romualdes is the best person at the right place at the right time to steer us towards the right direction of unity of our country, confidently rebuilt under the administration of President Bongbong Marcos. Together, the Partelis Block. All Partelis Block representatives feel that with Representative Romualdes at the helm of the House of Representatives, it will blaze new trails, bringing hope and decency to the lives of all Filipinos. We know that Speaker Representative Martin Romualdes will bring a steady hand as always, an open mind as always, and listening ear to us and to the nation, a clear gaze to the future, a clarity of vision in assessing our current challenges as we bring us together, bring us together in this House of the people to do God's work and truly serve the common good. Clearly, Mr. Speaker, you have our confidence, our trust, to bring us upward, forward, forward together, sir. Mabuhay si Speaker Romualdes, mabuhay kitang tanan dinis sa congreso, mabuhay ang Pilipinas.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move that the distinguished representative from the Third District of Pampanga, the Honorable Aurelio Dong D. Gonzalez Jr., be recognized to second the nomination.
The distinguished representative from the Third District of Pampanga, the Honorable Aurelio Dong D. Gonzalez Jr., is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. On behalf of the PDP Party, I rise to second the nomination of the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes of the First Legislative District of Leyte as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives. He served exceptionally well as Majority Leader in the last Congress, and I have faith that he will do even better as the Speaker of the House in the 19th Congress. He is steady, reliable, fair, and receptive to the concerns of his colleagues. I truly believe that he is the best position to implement the legislative agenda of the 19th Congress. So, Mr. Speaker, luwid ka, Speaker Martin, mabuhay ka, and my fellow kapampangan because the mother of Speaker Martin is also from Pampanga. So, move, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Presiding Officer, there being no other nominations for the position of Speaker of the House of Representatives, I move that the table for nominations be closed.
There is a motion to close the table for nominations for Speaker of the House of Representatives. Is there any objections? The Chair hears none. The motion is carried.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I move that we now proceed with the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives.
There is a motion to proceed to the election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives. Is there any objections? The Chair hears none. The election of the Speaker of the House of Representatives is now in order. The Deputy Secretary-General of the Legislative Operations Department, we now call the roll of members, may request every member to state the name of the candidate he or she is voting for as Speaker of the House of Representatives upon being called.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives. Abalos. Abante.
Mr. Speaker, I vote yes for the next Speaker, Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Abunda.
Acharon.
Yes, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes for the Speaker.
Asidre.
Mr. Presiding Officer, Tingong Partelis votes for Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Akop.
Mr. Presiding Officer, the Second District of the City of Antipolo votes for Congressman Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Adyong.
Smlahi Rahmanirohim, salamualaikum warahmatullahi taala hiwabarakaatuh. Mapiya kapibitar kano langon. Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the good people of the First District of Lano del Sur, whom I have the distinct privilege and the honor to represent them in the 19th Congress, I vote for the speakership. I vote yes to the speakership of Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes of the First Legislative District of Leyte.
Advinkula.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the Third Legislative District of Cavite, I vote for the Honorable Martin Romualdes for Speaker. Thank you.
Agarao.
From the Port District of Laguna, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Alba.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the First District of Bukinnon, it is my honor to cast my vote for Representative Martin Romualdes for Speaker of the House of the 19th Congress.
Albano.
Mr. Speaker, as a personal friend of him, I know that he is very much capable to lead the 19th Congress to become a good speaker, and I dare even to say for the future that the next Speaker of the 20th, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes for Speaker.
Almario.
Mr. Presiding Officer, the new administration under the leadership of President Ferdinand Bongbong Romualdes Marcos Jr. and Vice-President Sara Zimmerman Duterte is not only very promising, but surely the key to our country to bounce back well and even better than our neighboring countries. It is in this light that all the more we need a legislative branch of the government who can deliver the corresponding laws to complement the executive branch. The legislative branch, especially the 19th Congress and the House of Representatives, needs a leader who can steer more than 300 congressmen, and I am 101% certain that Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes is the person best qualified to lead this House as its Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Almonte.
The First District of Misamis Occidental votes for our next Speaker, Representative Martin Romualdes.
Alonte.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the Low District of Binian, I vote Representative Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Alvarez Jose.
On behalf of the people of Second District of Palawan, we happily vote for Martin G. Romualdes for Speaker. Thank you.
Alvarez Mercedes.
On behalf of the Chicks area or the Sixth District of Negroes Occidental, we vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Alvarez Pantalyon.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I vote for Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Amante.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of Third District of Laguna, I vote Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Amatong.
I vote for Representative Martin Romualdes as Speaker.
Ang. Angara.
On behalf of the people of Aurora, Representative Bromel Angara votes for Martin Ramaldes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Aquino.
May I'm buntag sa tanan mga congressman, my fellow colleagues in Congress. Ang boto ko po as representative of the first district of Agusan del Norte, ay matagal ng inaantay kong maging Speaker, aking kompare Martin Ramaldes.
Arbison.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the second district of Sulu, our vote is for Congressman Martin Ramaldes.
Arenas.
Mr. Presiding Officer, please allow me again first to acknowledge the presence of our Vice-President Inday Sara Duterte. On behalf of the third district of Pangasinan, we vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin Gomez Ramaldes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Aragancia.
Mr. Presiding Officer, from the third district of Quezon Province, I vote yes for the next Speaker of the House, Representative Martin Ramaldes. My vote is yes. Thank you.
Asistio.
Mr. Presiding Officer, as the representative from third district of Kalaokan City, my vote is for Speaker Martin Ramaldes.
Ataidi.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of district one, Quezon City, our vote goes to your honorable Speaker Martin Ramaldes.
Aumentado.
Mr. Presiding Officer, as a representative in the second district of Bohol, I vote yes for Congressman Martin Ramaldes as the Speaker in the 19th Congress in the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Balindong.
Bismillah rohman rohim. Salamualaikum warahmatullahi wabaraka'tu. In behalf of the second district of Lano del Sur, I vote for my boss, Congressman Ferdinand Martin Ramaldes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Barba.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the second district of the province of Iloos Norte, our vote is for Congressman Martin Gomez Ramaldes.
Barbers.
Mr. Presiding Officer, it is both an honor and privilege to vote for a gentleman in the true sense of the word. This gentleman, Mr. Presiding Officer, my dear colleagues, possesses the quality of a capable and a good leader. He has unquestionable integrity and a proven track record, to say the least. In the steering of the 18th and 19th Congress as the Majority Leader, he has proven a sterling track record. And never a doubt, Mr. Speaker, that this representation and in behalf of the people of the second district of Surigao del Norte, we vote in support for the next Speaker of the 19th Congress, Speaker Martin Ramaldes.
Baronda.
Mr. Speaker, having worked with the next Speaker for three years as our Majority Floor Leader, in behalf of the Low District of Ilo, Ilo City, my vote for the friend, true friend for all or to everyone, vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Gomez Ramaldes.
Barzaga.
Mr. Presiding Officer, the voice of the city of Das Marinas supports Congressman Ferdinand Martin Ramaldes as Speaker of the House for this Congress. Thank you very much.
Basco.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Presiding Chair, in behalf of the first district of Agusan del Sur, I vote for my idol Congressman Martin Ramaldes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Bautista.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the Low District of Dabox Occidental and the Lacas Party Family, yes to Congressman Martin Ramaldes as the next Speaker.
Bautista Lim.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of Dumper PTDA Partilis, my vote goes to Congressman Ferdinand Martin Ramaldes as our next Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Benitez.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the third district of Negroes Occidental, our vote is for our friend Martin Ramaldes as the Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Bernos.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the Low Legislative District of Abra, I vote for Congressman Martin Ramaldes as the Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Biones.
Mr. Presiding Officer, the first district of Capis votes for Congressman Martin Ramaldes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Biron.
Mr. Presiding Officer, from the fourth district of the province of Iloilo, I vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin Ramaldes as Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Bolilia.
Mr. Presiding Officer, this representation from the fourth district of Batangas votes yes for the election of Representative Martin Ramaldes as Speaker of the House of the 19th Congress.
Bondok.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the fourth district of Pampanga, we are honored to vote for our cabalen, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Gomez Ramaldes as the Speaker of the House. Salamat po.
Bongalon.
Mr. Presiding Officer, this representation from Ako Bicol Partilis votes for Congressman Ferdinand Martin Ramaldes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Bordado. Bosita. Briones.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of Agapartilis, I vote for Honorable Congressman Martin Ramaldes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Brosas.
Mr. Presiding Officer, this representation from Gabriela Partilis abstains.
Buain.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people of the first district of Batangas, it is my honor and privilege to vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Ramaldes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives for the 19th Congress.
Bulut Bigtang.
Mr. Presiding Officer, for the Low District of Apayo, I vote for Congressman Martin Ramaldes.
Bustos.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of Patrol Partilis, I vote for Representative Ramaldes.
Cabredo.
In behalf of the... Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the people of the third district of Albay, I vote for Congressman Martin Ramaldes for Speaker.
Kagas. Kahayon Uy.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of the second district of Kalaokan City, this representation is voting for Representative Ferdinand Martin Gomez Ramaldes to be the Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Kagas.
May I'm buntag, Mr. Speaker. May I'm buntag usap sa among pinanggang besip sedenti, Mayor Sara Duterte. Ngawa pa kayo. In behalf of the Low District of Dawo del Sur, among garbo nga mubutar kang Speaker Martin Ramaldes. May I'm buntag ka atong tanan.
Calderon.
Mr. Presiding Officer, as representative of the seventh district of Cebu, I cast my vote for Ferdinand Martin Ramaldes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you, Mr. Presiding.
Calixto.
Mr. Presiding Officer, in behalf of this Long District of Pasay, I vote for Martin Ramaldes as the 19th Congress Speaker.
Campos.
Mr. Presiding Officer, Ramaldes Speaker.
Kawagdan.
Ramaldes.
Cardema.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I vote for Representative Martin Ramaldes.
Kari.
Good morning, everybody. From the fifth district of Leyte, we are very much excited na yung magiging sunod na Speaker is from Leyte. We are, and I am voting for Ferdinand Martin Ramaldes. Dagan kayong salamat.
Castro Franz.
I abstain, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Castro Jane.
Jane Tan Castro, second district of Capis. I vote for Congressman Martin Ramaldes as Speaker of the House of Representatives, 19th Congress. Thank you.
Celeste.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I vote for Congressman Martin Ramaldes as the next Speaker of the House. Thank you.
John.
Mr. Presiding Officer, as the Low Representative of Lapulapo City, we vote aye for Representative Martin Ramaldes as Speaker of the House for the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Chato.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the first congressional district of the province of Bohol, allow me to manifest our very, very strong support to the next Speaker of the House of Representatives. We give our full trust and confidence in the leadership of Representative Ferdinand Martin Ramaldes. I know him not only in Congress and his zeal for public service, but likewise in our youth leadership days years, years back. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Chua.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the third district of the city of Manila, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Ramaldes as the next Speaker of the House. Thank you.
Chungalau.
Mr. Speaker, the people of Pilgao has spoken is having need to support this advocacy of either vote. Therefore, I vote for Martin Ramaldes for Speaker. Thank you.
Ko Angelica Natasha.
As the representative of the BHW Partilis, my vote goes to Honorable Congressman Ferdinand Martin G. Ramaldes for Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Ko Elizaldi.
Mr. Presiding Officer, as the president of Partilis Coalition and representative of Ako Bicol Partilis, votes for the future of our country, my vote is for Representative Ferdinand Martin Gomez Ramaldes. Thank you.
Ko Pilar.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the sixth district of Quezon City, it's an honor and privilege to vote Representative Ferdinand Martin Ramaldes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Kawanko Jaime.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on behalf of the first district of Terlak, it's my honor to vote for Ferdinand Martin Ramaldes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Kawanko Mort.
Mr. Presiding Officer, this representative from district two of Pangasinan votes for Martin Ramaldes as Speaker of this House.
Colada. Coliantes.
Mr. Presiding Officer, this representation from the third district of Batangas, composed of ten municipalities and two cities, namely Santo Tomas and Tanawan, votes for Martin Ramaldes as Speaker of the House for the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Corvera.
Mr. Speaker,
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the people of the Second District of Agusan del Norte, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives for the 19th Congress. Thank you very much.
Cruz Ambrosio.
Mister Presiding Officer, as the representative of the new Fifth District of Bulacan, I vote for Representative Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Cruz Ricardo.
Mister Presiding Officer, bilang kinatawan po ng unang distrito ng Tagig at Pateros, ang boto ko po ay para kay Speaker Romualdes.
Kua. Koresma.
Naimbag na bigat apo. Mister Speaker, Mister Presiding Officer, as representative of the Lone District of Nueva Biscaya, I'm honored and privileged to vote for Kong Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the 19th Congress of the 19th Congress. Agyamanakapo.
Dagook. Dalipe.
Second District of Sanbongga City votes for Representative Romualdes.
Dalog.
Mister Presiding Officer, gawisa agaw takwamin. Uh, as a representative of the Lone District of Mountain Province, our vote is for Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Dayang Hirang.
Mister Speaker, in behalf of the people of the First District of Abauriental, yes for Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Daza. Jesus. De Venesia.
Towards a creative and sustainable future and in behalf of Explore PD4 or the Fourth District of Pangasinan, my vote for Speaker goes to the President of our party, the CAS CMD, of which our beloved VP Mamindae Sara is Chair, a public servant of proven track record, my boss of three years, a man of whom I am so proud, Congressman Martin Romualdes.
Defensor.
On behalf of the Third District of Iloilo, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Delmar.
On behalf of the City of Cebu First District, Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House for 19th Congress.
De Los Santos.
Ang probinsyano partilis votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Di Maporo Mohamed Kalid.
Salam alaykum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mister Presiding Officer and dear colleagues, on behalf of the First District of Lanau del Norte, I vote for our incoming Speaker, Martin Romualdes.
Di Maporo City Amina.
On behalf of the Second District of Lanau del Norte, I vote for Representative Martin Romualdes as our next Speaker.
Dionisio.
Your Honor, in behalf of the First District of the City of Manila, it is a pleasure and an honor to vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as our next Speaker. Thank you.
Domingo.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the First District of the Province of Bulacan, it is my honor and privilege to vote for our new Speaker, Congressman Ferdinand T. Romualdes. Thank you.
Duavit.
Your Honor, with absolute confidence, the people of the First District of Rizal cast its vote for the honorable Martin Romualdes.
Duhalii.
Mayong Utu, Mister Presiding Officer, mayong utu Vice President Inday Sara Duterte. In behalf of the Second District of Davao del Norte, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as our Speaker of 19th Congress.
Duterte.
May ingad law sa tanan para sa distrito uno sa syudad sa Davao, Congressman Martin Romualdes.
Di Faustino Ino.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the Sixth District of Isabela, we'd like to cast our vote for no other than Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Di Faustino Michael.
The Fifth District of Isabela choose Martin Romualdes for Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Di Ian Paul.
On behalf of the Third District of Isabela, we cast our vote for our next Speaker, Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Ecleyo.
Mister Presiding Officer, Lone District of Dinagat Islands votes for my boss, Congressman Martin Romualdes, as the Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Emano.
Mayong Buntag, Mister Presiding Officer, mayong Buntag VP Sara, ang katauhan sa kaduwang distrito sa Lalawigan sa misamis Oriental, will vote for, of course, Chairman Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Enciso. Enverga.
Mister Presiding Officer, the First District of Quezon Province votes for Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Escudero.
On behalf of the First District of Sorsugon, I vote yes for Mister Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Espares. Espina.
On behalf of the Lone District of Biliran, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes for our next Speaker.
Estrella.
Mister Presiding Officer, this representation from the Abono Partelis votes Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker.
Yudella. Farinias.
Mister Presiding Officer, as represent of probinsyano ako partilis, we vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes.
Fernandez. Ferrer Antonio.
Mister Speaker, Mister Speaker, um, Congressman Martin Romualdes is my speaker and I, uh, my vote is for him.
Ferrer Antonio.
On behalf of District of Cavite, we vote for Representative Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Ferrer Juliet Marie.
On behalf of the Fourth District of Negroes Occidental, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as our next Speaker.
Flores.
On behalf of the Second District of Pukinon, I vote for Representative Martin Romualdes.
Fortes.
Mister Presiding Officer, the Second District of the Province of Sorsugon casts its vote for the Speaker in the 19th Congress in favor of the honorable Martin Romualdes. Thank you very much.
Frasco.
Mayong Buntag, Mister Presiding Officer, mayong Buntag VP Inday Sara Duterte. Representing the Fifth District of Cebu, I proudly vote for the gentleman from the First Legislative District of Late, Ferdinand Martin Romualdes, as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Prisneti.
As a representative of the Lone District of the City of Montilupa. Mister Presiding Officer, sir.
Yes, sir, please, sir.
As a representative of the Lone District of the City of Montilupa, my vote is for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Fuentebelia.
On behalf of the people of the Fourth District of Camarini Sur, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes. Thank you.
Galeos.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the Second District of Cebu, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes as the new Speaker of the 19th Congress. Dagang salamat.
Garcia Albert.
Mister Presiding Officer, the Second District of Bataan through this representation votes for the honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Garcia Dante.
Mister Presiding Officer, being a representative of the Second District of La Union, my vote goes to Honorable Romualdes.
Garcia Jose Arturo.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the Third District of Rizal, uh, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes for the next Speaker. Thank you.
Garcia Maria Angela.
Mister Presiding Officer, this humble representation from the Third District of Bataan votes for his honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House. Thank you.
Garcia Pablo John.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people of the Third District, the Province of Cebu, I have the honor to vote for my fellow neophyte in the 14th Congress, contemporary in the UP College of Law, and a friend of the family, the next Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Garcia Vincent.
Good afternoon. I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Gardiola.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the CWS Partelis, my vote is for my boss, Congressman Honorable Martin Romualdes.
Garin.
Mister Presiding Officer, yours truly grew up in the province of Late, together with the honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. I saw him honed into what I call one of the perfect gentlemen. And when I entered politics, in the other side of the Visayas, in the western part, I can see a colleague in the eastern part of the Visayas, who is not only a gentleman in nature, but a pure leader with a heart ready to shepherd the House of Representatives. With the voice of the first, with the voice of the people from the First Congressional District of Iloilo, Mister Presiding Officer, our vote goes for the honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker. Thank you.
Gasataya.
Mayong utu Mister Speaker or Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the people of Bacolod City, ang boto po namin ay para kay Congressman Martin Romualdes para sa susunod na Speaker ng 19th Congress. Maraming salamat.
Gachalian.
Romualdes.
Gato.
Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the Lone District of Batanes, I vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as the Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Go Ed Christopher.
Bilang representante ng igalang distrito ng Isabela, ang boto ko po ay para kay Congressman Martin Romualdes.
Go Mark.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people of Baguio City, I vote for Honorable Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Goles.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of Malasakit at Bayaniyan Partelis, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Gomez.
Mayong utu sa tanan na ton ng mga exuon, as representative of the good and beautiful people of the Fourth District of Leyte, it is my pride and honor to nominate a true-blooded Leytenyo, a person of integrity, a true gentleman, who I know can move this house, move forward together. With full trust and confidence, I proudly vote for Martin Romualdes as Speaker of this august chamber.
Gonzaga.
Second District Davao de Oro, yes for Speaker Romualdes.
Gonzalez Aurelio.
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer. Baka mabigla kayo, tawagan ko si Speaker Jake. Alam niyo, 14 Congress, magkaibigan na kami niyan. And of course, palakpapak po natin si Ma'am Juliet, Bang Juliet, palakpapak po natin, mother of Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Palakpapak po natin ang aking kababayan. On behalf of the Third District of Pampanga, I vote.
On behalf of the 3rd District of Pampanga, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes for Speaker. Thank you.
Gonzalez Neptali.
Yes na yes, Romualdes.
Gonzalez Sandro.
May I'm adlaw sa tanan, may I'm adlaw to our Vice President VP Inday Sara Duterte. In behalf of Marino Party List, I vote for the Honorable Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House. Thank you.
Goriseta.
Mister Presiding Officer, uh, on behalf of the people of the 2nd District of Iloilo, I vote for a man of dignity, a dedicated leader, and, uh, the next Speaker of the 19th Congress, Congressman Martin G. Romualdes.
Guiko.
Mister, uh, Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 5th District of Pangasinan, I vote yes to our, uh, President of Lacas, uh, Ferdinand, Congressman Ferdinand, uh, Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Ginto.
Kaysa ang mga nagtiwala sa pinuno party list, aming ipinagkatiwala ang suportan namin sa pamumuno ng kinatawan, Martin Romualdes bilang pinuno o speaker ng kapulungan ng mga kinatawan ng Pilipinas. Thank you.
Gulyas.
Mister Presiding Officer, the 1st District of Cebu proudly votes for Congressman Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Gutierrez. Hagedorn.
Mister Presiding Officer, Madam Vice President Sara Duterte, sa alam po ng 3rd District ng Palawan, na binubuo po ng Port of Princess City at ng Borlan, yes na yes rin po ang bota namin para kay Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Mabuhay po kayo pag palagay sa inang panginoon.
Haresco.
Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the 2nd District of Aklan, to include Boracay, it is my honor and joy to vote for a man who has the humility to listen to all, a clarity of intellect, and the courage to daily attend, uh, the 18th Congress, navigate vital bills like Bayanihan 1 and Bayanihan 2 and other bills in our war, in our war against COVID. This is, this great leader, this person is no other than Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes. For the next Speaker, the next six years, Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the 2nd District of Aklan, to include Boracay.
Potaman. Hernandez Alcantara.
Good day, as a representative of the great Lone District of Calamba, I vote for Honorable Representative Martin Romualdes as the next House Speaker for the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Herrera. Orribata.
Good afternoon, Mister Presiding Officer. On behalf of 1st District of Camarinesur, I vote for Honorable Martin Romualdes to be the next Speaker of 19th Congress. Thank you.
Javier.
May I'm butto haatong tanan. The 2nd District of Leite votes for our beloved 1st District of Leite representative, Ferdinand Martin Romualdes, as the Speaker of the House for the 19th Congress. Daramang salamat.
Co Olga Ara.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 2nd District of Masbate, I cast my vote in favor of Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Co Ricardo.
Mister Presi, Mister Presiding Officer, representing the 1st District of Masbate, I vote for Congressman Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House.
Co Wilton.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people of the 3rd District of Masbate, I cast my vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Kong Hun.
Pagbibigay galang po sa ating VC Presidente, Mayor Inday Sara Duterte. Bilang representant, bilang representante ng unang distrito ng Zambales, buong pagmamalaki ko pong ibinuboto si Congressman Martin Romualdes upang maging ganap na Speaker ng mababang kapulungan. Mabuhay po ang kongreso, mabuhay po kayo, Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Labad Labad.
Please proceed, ma'am. Your Honor, we cannot hear you. Honorable Labad Labad is recognized.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of my constituent Legislative District of San Buanga del Norte, I respectfully vote for the honorable Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Laxon. Laxon Noel.
The Lone District of Malabuan votes for Representative Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the House for the 19th Congress.
Lagman.
Mister Presiding Officer, being with the authentic political opposition, I am constrained to vote no.
Lagon Daphne.
May I'm butto ka na tong tanan. From 6th District Cebu Province, I will vote Congressman Martin Romualdes as our new Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Lagon Sunny.
May I'm butto sa tanan. Uh, in behalf of Aku Visaya Party List, uh, I vote yes for the Honorable Congressman Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House. Daramang salamat.
Lara.
May I'm baga aldaw kanyate ang napo. Mister Speaker, yo votos na 3era distrito ng Kagayan para Speaker of the House of Representatives. Para sa tuloy-tuloy po ng kaunlaran ng probinsya ng Kagayan, awan tanakuan nuzi, is Speaker ku, Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Mabalat.
Lazatin. In behalf of the 1st District of Pampanga, I vote for Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House. Lee.
The Honorable Lee is recognized.
Legarda.
May I'm butto, Mister Presiding Officer. Uh, on behalf of my fellow Antekenios, uh, as a Lone District Representative of our province, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as our new next Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Libanan. Lim Kay Chong.
Um, Mister Presiding Officer, this representation from the Negroes, uh, 1st District of Negroes Oriental concurs with the majority member and votes yes for Speaker, uh, Congressman Romualdes, Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Loyola.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people of the 5th District of Cavite, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Luistro.
For the people of Batanga's 2nd District, this representation extends courtesy to the Vice President, Her Excellency Inday Sara Duterte. For the speakership, this representation is honored and privileged to cast her very first vote for the Honorable Representative of Leite Ferdinand Martin Romualdes for the Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Lumayag.
Thank you, Mister Presiding, uh, for the 1st District of South Cotabato, Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker of 19th Congress.
Makapagalaroyo.
I vote yes for Martin Romualdes for Speaker.
Maceda.
Uh, Mister Speaker, this humble representation from the 4th District of Manila gives his, uh, full unequivocal and unwavering support, uh, for my colleague Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Madrona.
Mister Presiding Officer, Romblun votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Magcino. Malapitan.
Mister Presiding.
On behalf of the 1st District of Palkalokan, kay Congressman Romualdes po, Speaker Romualdes po the 19th Congress.
The Honorable Magcino is recognized.
Mister Presiding Officer, magantang tanghalipo Vice President Inday Sara Duterte. To my colleagues, bilang representante po ng OFW Party List, I abstain.
Mangawang.
Mister Presiding Officer, uh, on behalf of the people Lone District of the Province of Kalinga, our vote is for Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the House. Thank you so much.
Manikiz.
Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the 2nd Legislative District of Zambales, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes. Thank you po.
Manuel.
Good morning, Speaker. Good morning, colleagues. Uh, this representation from Kabataan Party List abstains from voting.
Maranyon.
Good afternoon, Madam Vice President. The 2nd District of Negroes Occidental votes for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as a Speaker for the 19th Congress.
Marco Leta.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of Sagip Party List, this representation votes for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes, Speaker of the House of Representatives for the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Marcos.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of the 1st District of Ilocos Norte, I vote for Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Mariano Hernandez.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the 2nd District of Laguna, which consists of the City of Cabuyao and the municipalities of Las Banios and Bahe, I vote for the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives of the 19th Congress. Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer.
Mourinho.
Mister Presiding Officer, Ferdinand Martin Romualdes is the best. I vote for the best. Please count my vote.
Marquez.
Good afternoon, Mister Presiding Officer. On behalf of the 1st District of the Province of Aklan, I vote yes for Congressman Honorable Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes as the Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Martinez.
Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Mastura.
Asalamualaikum, warakmatulahi talawa barakatuhu. Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the 1st District of Magindanaw with Cotabato City, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Naniniwakala po kami na sa Speaker Romualdes ay magiging huwaran, matapat, at mabuting leader ng ating kamara. Kaya po, ibinibigay namin, ang suportan namin sa kanya at sa kanyang mga adhikain ngayong ikalabing siyam na kongreso. Shukran and wasalam.
Matibag.
Mister Presiding Officer, representing the 1st District of the Province of Laguna, the City of San Pedro, it is my greatest honor to say that our vote for speakership in the 19th Congress is of course for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Matugas.
Maradyaw na butto sa tanan, uh, para sa 1st District of Sorico.
Uh, para sa First District of Surigo del Norte, Shergawayland, ang amo boto para kan Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Mendoza.
May unto, Mister Speaker. Para sa mga manggagawang Pilipino, mga momo, paliyoglang, papasa tayo na batas para sa kanila, Mister Speaker. Uh, TUCP for Speaker Martin Romaldes. Tagang salamat.
Mercado.
The First District of Southern Leyte is very proud to vote for Congressman Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Mercado Revilla.
Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the Second District of Cabite, I vote for the President of Lacasi MD Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the House of Representatives this 19th Congress. Salamat po.
Miguel.
Yukifu, magandang tanghali. This representation for the Second District of South Cotabato votes for Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Momo.
Brother Presiding Officer, in behalf of the Province of Surigo del Sur, First District, I will vote for Honorable Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Morden.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the Banti Pangkasinan Ilocano Partilist, I vote for Congressman Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Nava.
Mister Presiding Officer, this representation from the Lone District of Umaras votes for Honorable Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the House for the 19th Congress.
Recording in progress.
Nisa.
Ay, the Lone Puso Pinoy Partilist Representative to hereby vote Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes to be the Speaker of the House of the Representative of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
No Grales Juan Fidel Felipe.
I vote for Representative Romaldes as our next House Speaker.
Noel. No Grales Margarita Ignacia.
Good afternoon, Mister Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to our Vice President, Vice President Inday Sara Duterte. On behalf of PBA Partilist, this representation votes for Honorable Martin Romaldes as the next Speaker for the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Nolasco.
Your Honor, on behalf of the people of the First District of Kagayan, I hereby vote for the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes as Speaker of the House.
Oaminal.
Mister Speaker, the people of the Second District of Misamis Occidental, whom I serve, are confident that we can reach great heights and achieve monumental milestones under the leadership of the good gentleman from Leyte. Thus, I vote for the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes as the next Speaker of the House.
Olaso.
Buenas dias atodos. Señor Posicionario del Camara 19. Antes de todo, quiero saludar dale mi amor con el daton Vice Presidente Inday Sara Duterte. Este representante particularmente del Distrito Uno del mi abable ciudad de Sangboanga, mi voto, saludo y respeto para con Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes Jr. Muchas gracias y buenas dias.
Olivares.
Mister Presiding Officer, this humble representation of the First District of the City of Paranyake, I'm casting my vote yes for Congressman Representative Martin Romaldes as the next Speaker of this 19th Congress. Thank you.
Ongchuan. Ordanes.
Good afternoon, Mister Presiding Officer, to our Vice President Inday Sara. In behalf of the more than 12 million senior citizens, I vote for boss Badyo Congressman Martin Romaldes as our new Speaker. Thank you.
Ortega.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Tinagan ti Prmero Distrito ti La Union, this humble representation would like to cast his vote for Honorable Martin Romaldes. Thank you.
Owanodison.
May unto sa tanan, Mister Presiding Officer. In behalf of the people of the Lone District of Mandawe, Province of Cebu, I vote for the Honorable Martin Romaldes as the Speaker of the 19th Congress. Tagang salamat.
Padearnos.
On behalf of Galingsapuso Partilist, I will vote for Congressman Martin Romaldes for the speakership of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Paduano. Paglas.
Bismillah, rahmanir rahim. Salaamualaikum warakmatullahi talawa barakatuho. Uh, respecto sa ating mahal na Vice President Mira Sara Duterte, uh, sangalan po ng si Kandistrito ng Magindanaw, with trust and confidence to the leadership of our incoming Speaker, Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes, uh, we cast our votes with the trust and confidence dahil po alam namin isa po kayo sa makakatulong sa amin sa maging problema namin sa aming probinsya. Wassalamualaikum warakmatullahi talawa barakatuho.
Palma.
On behalf of the First District of Sangboanga Cebugay, our vote is for Congressman FMR Romaldes as the next Speaker.
Panaligan.
Mister Presiding Officer, this representation from the First District of Oriental Mindoro, cast his vote for the person most eminently qualified to lead this chamber as Speaker. A veteran legislator, a person with a mastery of the parliamentary process, and the president of our party Lacasi MD, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes. Thank you.
Pancho.
In behalf of the Second District of Bulakan, I vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the 19th Congress of the House of Representatives.
Panotes.
In behalf of the Second District of Camarines Norte, I vote for Congressman Martin Romaldes. Thank you.
Pasqual.
Sangalan ng mga tao sa ika-apat na distrito ng Lalawigan ng Nueva Isihah, ang aking napakahalaga at banal na boto ay buong karangalan kong ibinibigay kay Ginoong Martin Romaldes bilang susunod na pagpagsalita ng kapulungan ng mga kinatawan sa Pilipinas ng ikalabing siyam na kongreso. Maraming salamat po.
Pena.
Congressman Martin Romaldes, Speaker.
Pimentel.
On behalf of the Second District of the Province of Surigo del Sur, I vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Plaza.
As Representative of the Second District of the Province of Agusan del Sur, I vote yes for Ferdinand Martin Romaldes as our next Speaker of the House.
Plato.
May ibag na mulimyo apo. Magandang nga apondimpo sa ating ginagalang at minamahal na pangalawang pangulo, Inday Sara Duterte. Sangalan po ng ikaanim na distrito ng Bulakan, bagong-bago pong distrito, kami po ay sumusuporta kay kinatawan Martin Romaldes sa pagka pagpagsalita ng kapulungan, mababang kapulungan ng Pilipinas. Yus tagina apo.
Primicias Agabas.
May ibag na aldaw tayo amin. Madam Vice President Sara Duterte, Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people of the Sixth District of Pangkasinan, I vote for Honorable Martin Romaldes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives in the 19th Congress.
Umarin.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the Third District of Quezon City, vote a resounding yes to my future mentor, Speaker Martin Romaldes.
Uno.
Mister Presiding Officer, the people of the First District of Antipolo, vote for Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romaldes as the Speaker of the House of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Kimbo.
Mister Presiding Officer, ang boto ng ikalawang distrito na Marikina City ay para kay Attorney Martin Romaldes.
Rama.
May unto sa tanan. On behalf of the Second District, the City of Cebu, my vote goes to Martin Romaldes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Recto.
I vote yes for Martin Romaldes.
Rehenzia.
Good afternoon, Mister Presiding Officer. In behalf of the constituents of Iligan City, I vote yes to Representative Ferdinand Romaldes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you po.
Revilla Bryan.
Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of Agimat Partilist, I would like to vote for Martin Romaldes for Speaker of the House. Thank you.
Revilla Ramon.
Mister Presiding Officer, sangalan po ng unang distrito ng Lalawigan ng Cabite, ang boto po namin ay para sa susunod na Speaker, Martin Romaldes.
Reyes.
Yes, Representative Ray Florence Reyes of Panakalusugan Partilist, we vote in favor of the speakership of Representative Ferdinand Martin Romaldes. Thank you.
Rilio.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the Fourth District of Quezon City, it is an honor for me to vote for Congressman Martin Romaldes as Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Rivera.
On behalf of the District of Talat, I vote Congressman Martin Romaldes for Speaker. Thank you.
Robes.
Sangalan po ng lungsod ng San Jose del Monte Bulakan, kami po ay para sa ating Speaker at kaibigan, Congressman Martin Romaldes. Salamat po.
Rodriguez Yulojio.
In behalf of the Lone District of Catanduanes, I vote Congressman Martin Romaldes as a Speaker of the 19th Congress and also the kabobain of my mother. Thank you.
Rodriguez Rufus.
Mister Presiding Officer, the Second District of Kagayan di Oro, the city of golden friendship, the land of the best whitewater rafting in the world, and in the presence of her honor, the Vice President of the Republic of the Philippines, Inday Sara Duterte. The people of the Second District of Kagayan di Oro cast its vote to a leader who will serve with the highest degree of responsibility, integrity, loyalty, and efficiency as enshrined in the 1987 Constitution. We cast our vote to the Honorable Representative Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romaldes, Mister Speaker. Thank you.
Roman.
Ginoong tagapamuno, sangalan po ng unang distrito ng Bataan, ang aking boto ay walang iba para sa isang taong nagmamayari na mga katangian ng isang mabuting tinuno ng mababang kapulungan, ang kasipagan at katyagaan sa gitna ng maraming trabaho, ang kababaang loob sa gitna po ng napakalaking kapangyarihan at higit sa lahat ang pagmamahal sa ating bayan. Walang iba, kundi ang taong matagal po ng sinusuportahan, walang iba, kundi si Ginoong Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romaldes. Maraming salamat po.
Romero.
Madam Vice President, Inday Sara. Good afternoon. In behalf of the One Pacman Partilist, I throw my full support and vote to my good friend Representative Martin Romaldes. Thank you.
Romaldes Ferdinand Martin. Romaldes Yedamari.
Mister Presiding Officer, as a representative of Tigo Partilist, my vote is for Romaldes.
Romaldo.
Good afternoon, Mister Presiding Officer. In behalf of the Lone District of the Province of Camigin, uh, my vote is for our Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romaldes. And also, Mister Presiding Officer, I would like to thank our incoming Speaker for the mentor of my son.
And also Mister Presiding Officer, I would like to thank our incoming Speaker for the mentor of my son, former Congressman XJ Romualdo, now the Governor of the province of Camigin. Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer.
Romulo.
Mister Presiding Officer, having known Representative Martin Romualdes since our UP Law days, being his classmate since the 14th Congress, knowing the person who he is, as representative of the lone district of Pasig City, I vote Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House.
Roque.
Good afternoon. On behalf of the fourth district of the province of Bukidnon, we cast our vote, no, I cast my vote, to the new Speaker of the House, Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Sacdalan.
Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the first district of North Cotabato, I vote for Representative Martin Romualdes.
Segarberia.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the second district, province of Negroes Oriental, I vote Martin Romualdes for Speaker for the 19th Congress.
Sakaluran.
Mister Presiding Officer, Vice President Indaisara Duterte, and to all my dear colleagues, good afternoon. My vote is yes to our boss, the next Speaker of the House, Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Salcedo.
Our beloved Vice President, Sara Duterte, dati pa sana, ngayon natupad na, destino ng Pilipinas ang progreso, destino ni Martin ang pagiging Speaker. My vote is for Romualdes.
Sali.
Biswila Rahmani Rahim, salamualaikum murahmatullahi talaw barakat. Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people of Tawi Tawi, as the representative of the lone district, province of Tawi Tawi, my vote is a big yes for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes to be the Speaker of the House of the 19th Congress. Thank you very much.
Salimbangon.
May unto sa tanan, in behalf of the fourth district of Cebu, I vote for Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House in the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Salo.
Mister Presiding Officer, Madam Vice President Indaisara Duterte, ang kinatawan pong ito ay tuloy-tuloy ang suporta kay Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes sa pagkatayong naiiniwala sa kanyang pagkatao at prinsipyo. Kung kaya't ikinagagalak ko at kenararangal na iboto para sa Kabayan Partilist, mula sa Kabayan Partilist, si Congressman Romualdes bilang Speaker ng 19th Congress. Maraming salamat po.
Saulomi.
Mayad na punsa tanan, para sa unang distrito iyang palawan, I vote for Martin Romualdes. Matamang salamat po.
Santos.
Good morning, everyone. Mister Speaker, on behalf of the Cotabateños of the third district of Cotabato, I vote and support Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker for the 19th Congress. Maraming salamat.
Saulog.
Good afternoon, Mister Presiding Officer. As Kalinya Partilist representative, I vote for Honorable Representative Martin Romualdes as House Speaker in this 19th Congress. Thank you.
Silverio.
Sa ngalan po ng mga mamayan ng ikatlong distrito ng Bulakan, karangalan ko po na iboto bilang Speaker ng ikalabing siyam na kongreso ang iginagalang na kinatawan ng unang distrito ng Leite, Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes. Maraming salamat po.
Sinson Rachel.
As the representative of Ako Ilocano Ako Partilis, we, the Ilocanos, vote in favor of Ferdinand Martin Romualdes. Thank you.
Sinson Ronald.
As representative of the first district of Ilocosur, I proudly vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of the 19th Congress.
Sinson Mihan.
In behalf of the second district of Ilocosur, we vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as House Speaker for the 19th Congress.
Solon.
From the province of Sarangani Province, we vote for the speakership of Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Soriano. Suwan.
On behalf of the first district of Cagayan di Oro City, I vote for Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Suansing Horacio.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the second district of Sultan Koderat, I cast my vote to the honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Suansing Michaela.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people of the first district of Nueva Ecija, it is my honor to cast my vote for the honorable Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Suarez.
Mister Presiding Officer, before I cast my vote, let me be first to congratulate our incoming Speaker Martin Romualdes. The second district of Quezon Province votes for Martin Romualdes to be our Speaker for the 19th Congress.
Taliado.
And we have the people of Camarines Norte, first district, I cast my vote for Honorable Martin Romualdes as our new Speaker of the House. Thank you.
Tamayo.
On behalf of Angat Partilist, Mister Presiding Officer, I cast my vote in favor of Honorable Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Tambunding.
The second district of the city of Parinyake votes for Representative Martin Romualdes for Speaker. Thank you.
Tan Joseph.
Mister Presiding Officer, from the fourth district of Isabela, I vote yes for Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Tan Keith.
Mister Presiding Officer, the fourth district of Quezon Province votes for the honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Tan Michael Reynolds. Tan Samir. Tan Stephen James. Tan Tambut.
On behalf of Kusug Tausug Partilist, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as Speaker.
Tanchay.
On behalf of Sagip Partilist, this representation votes for Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Tan Watko.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the second district of Lusal, our vote goes to the next Speaker, Martin Romualdes.
Soriala.
Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the lone district of Occidental Mindoro, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as the new Speaker for the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Teodoro.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the first district of Marikina City, I vote for the honorable Ferdinand Romualdes as the Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Davis Arnolfo.
Good afternoon. On behalf of the third district of Negroes Oriental, my vote goes to Kong Martin Romualdes.
Davis Jose.
Mister Presiding Officer, italino at galing ng Pilipino, TGP Partilist, throw this representation, votes for the honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives this 19th Congress. Ang inyong pamumulo bilang Speaker ay tunay na sumasalaming sa talino at galing ng Pilipino.
Piyanko.
Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the people of the lone district of Nevotas, it is my honor to vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
Tieng.
The fifth district of Manila supports and votes for Congressman Martin Romualdes.
Tolentino.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the Cavitenos from the eighth district of Cavite, I vote for Honorable Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Tulfo Jocelyn. Tulfo Ralph Wendell.
Mister Presiding Officer, the people of the second district of Quezon City votes for our new Speaker, Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Tupas. Titor.
Mister Presiding Officer, madzong unto gikan sa tercero distrito sa pibisya sa Bohol. Sa akong mga katauhan, ang among vote para ni Congressman Martin Romualdes. Daghang salamat.
Ti.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of LPGMA Partilist, I vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Umali.
Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the second district of Oriental Mindoro, I vote for Speaker Martin Romualdes.
Unabia.
Mister Presiding Officer, representing the first district of Misamis Oriental, my vote is for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of 19th Congress. Thank you.
Ungab.
Mister Presiding Officer, as I have already seconded the nomination of the honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives, let me reiterate my vote and the vote of my district, the third district of the Wau City, that we are voting, that I am voting for the honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives. Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer.
Valeriano.
Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the people of second district of Manila, it is my honor to vote Representative Martin Romualdes.
Valmayor.
May hapon sa tanan, may hapon Madam Vice President. Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the people of the first district of Negroes Occidental, we vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes for our Speaker for the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Vargas.
The fifth legislative district of Quezon City votes for the speakership of the honorable Martin Romualdes.
Vargas Alfonso.
I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker.
Velasco.
Mister Presiding Officer, to our beloved Vice President Indaisara Duterte Carpio, in behalf of the lone district of Marinduke, it is my honor to vote as Speaker for the 19th Congress of the House of Representatives, our hard-working and staunch partner in serving the Filipino people, a good friend, Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Veloso Toazon.
Maupay nga unto hatanan, Vice President Indaisara, Mister Presiding Officer. On behalf of the third district of Leite, it is my distinct honor to vote for our fellow Leitenyo, Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker for the 19th Congress.
Vergara. Versosa.
Mister Speaker, isa pong karangalan sa amin sa tutuktuin Partilist, na suporta ng liderato ng aming kaibigan, na kasama sa hirap, makakasama sa pagbabago, sa pagtulong at sa pagbigay na pag-asa, ang aming Speaker, Speaker Martin G. Romualdes.
Villia.
Vice President Indaisara Duterte, mayong hapon, good afternoon. Mister Presiding Officer, representing lone district of Sikihor, I vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House of the 19th Congress.
Villia Fuerte Luis. Raymond.
Magandang umaga sa inyong lahat, Diyos maray na aldau. Ang boto ko po ay solid, buo, walang kaduda-duda para kay Speaker Martin Romualdes. Salamat po.
Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis.
Good morning to all.
Good morning to all, Diyos maray na ramragan inyong amin. On behalf of the Rinconada Area, Province of Camarinesur, I would like to vote Congressman Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress. Maraming salamat po.
Villia Nueva.
Mister Speaker, sa pag-asa ng mapabili, isang pagbangon at pagulad ang ating minamahal na bansang Pilipinas, at sa makulay na outstanding performance ng majolikir 18th Congress, sa pangalampo ng citizens' battle against corruption, also known as SIBA Partilis, I am releasing my resounding yes vote for the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes to be the Speaker of the House of Representatives 19th Congress. Thank you and God bless you more, Speaker, Mister Speaker, and God bless the 19th Congress and our beloved country, the Philippines. Thank you.
Villiar.
Mister Presiding Officer, as a representative of the Lone District of Laspenias City, it is my distinct honor and privilege to vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the 19th Congress.
Villiaraza Suarez.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of Alona Partilis, my vote for the next Speaker of the House is my ninong, Martin Romualdes.
Villiarica.
On behalf of the Fourth District of Bulacan, I am honored to vote for Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Violago.
Magandang hapon po sa ating lahat, Mister Presiding Officer. Ang pangalawang distrito ng Nueva Isihah ay para kay Representative Martin Romualdes bilang Speaker ng 19th Congress.
Yap Christian Tel.
Mister Presiding Officer, in behalf of the Second District of the Province of Tarlac, we vote, I vote for Congressman Martin Romualdes as the next Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Yap Christopher Son.
Maayong utu, Mister Presiding Officer. In behalf of the Second District of Southern Leyte, it is my honor and privilege to cast my vote for Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Yap Edvick.
Mister Presiding Officer, this representation from Axia's Partilis votes for Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Yap Eric.
Magandang hapon po kay VP Inday Sara Duterte. Bilang kinatawan ng probinsya ng Benguet, siyempre po hindi pa babayaan ni Speaker Martin Romualdes ang Benguet. We vote for Martin Romualdes bilang Speaker. Congratulations po.
You Divina Grace.
Mayong hapon sa tanan, Mister Presiding Officer. Before I vote, let me acknowledge first the presence of our beautiful Vice President, Honorable Inday Sara Duterte. Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the First District of Zamboanga del Sur, I vote for Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the House of Representatives of the 19th Congress. Thank you very much.
You Jaisal Victoria.
Maayong hapon sa tanan, Mister Presiding Officer. On behalf of Zamboanga del Sur's Second District, I vote Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker for the House of Representatives for the 19th Congress. Daghang salamat.
Yulo.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. In behalf of the people of the Fifth District of the Province of Negroes Occidental, I vote for the Honorable Martin Romualdes as Speaker of the 19th Congress. Thank you.
Zamora Amparo Maria.
Mister Presiding Officer, sangalan po ng ikalawang distrito ng lungsod ng tagig, ang boto po namin ay para kay Speaker Martin Romualdes. Maraming salamat po.
Zamora Maria Corman.
Mister Presiding Officer, on behalf of the First District of Davao de Oro, I vote for Congressman Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as the Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Zamora Isabel Maria.
Mister Presiding Officer, San Juan City votes for Speaker Martin Romualdes. Thank you very much.
Zubiri.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today is my first day as a member. Today is my first day as a member of the government. I arrived today and immediately I am here. But I'm so happy that on my first day, I already participated. And this participation makes me very, very happy. Allow me to read this. "In behalf of the Province Subukinon, especially the Third District, I cast my vote for Representative Martin Romualdes as Speaker for the 19th Congress because he has done a lot for us in the Province Subukinon." Thank you, Martin. Thank you very much.
Second call for the election of the position of the Honorable Speaker of the House of Representatives. Ang.
Mister Presiding Officer.
Please proceed, Your Honor.
Mister Presiding Officer.
Please proceed, Honorable Ang.
Mister Presiding Officer, to our Vice President Inday Sara.
Honorable sir, Honorable Ang is still on the line.
Not among Sara. This representation from Manila Teachers Partilis votes yes for the speakership of Ferdinand Martin Gomez Romualdes. Congratulations.
Honorable Jojo Ang is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Presiding Officer. As Representative of Oswaldo Ilongo Partilis, I vote for my good friend, a loyal friend, Representative Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as House Speaker for this 19th Congress. Salamat kag mainuswagun nga adlaw sa atuntanan. Congratulations, Mister Speaker Martin.
Yudella. Please proceed, Your Honor.
Maayong utu kanatong tanan, on behalf of Cican District, will give our full support and solid yes vote to the speakership of Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes.
Li. Li. Romualdes Ferdinand Martin. Romualdes. Tan Samir. Tan Stephen. Tulfo Joseline. Tupas.
On behalf of the people of the Fifth District of Iloilo, it is by honor to vote for Honorable Ferdinand Martin Romualdes as Speaker of 19th Congress. Salamat po.
Abalos. Bordado. Bosita. Colada. Dago. Daza. Deusus. Enciso. Espares. Gutierrez. Ataman. Herrera. Libanan. Noel. Ongchuan. Paduano. Soriano. Tan Reynolds. Vergara.
Your Honors, with four members abstaining from the vote, twenty-two members who did not vote, and one negative vote. The results of the voting show that Representative from the First District of Leyte, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes garnered 283 votes. With 283 votes, the chair declares a gentleman from the First District of Leyte, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes, as a duly elected Speaker of the House of Representatives. Mister Presiding Officer, I move that the committee of five members, composed of Representative Isidro Tiungab, Representative Roberto Vipuno, Representative Camille A. Villar, Representative Christine Singson Mihan, and Representative Raymond Democritosi Mendoza, be constituted to notify the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes of his election as Speaker of the House of Representatives. and thereafter to escort the Speaker-elect to the Rose Room for the oath-taking rites. Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Notification Committee is hereby constituted. The Members of the House are hereby appointed to the Notification Committee and their request to inform the Speaker-elect, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes, of his election and to escort him to the Rose Room. The Chair invites the family of the Speaker-elect, Honorable Ferdinand Alexandre A. Marcos, and the Vice President of the Republic of the Philippines, Her Excellency Sara Zebramandotarte, to join him at the Rose Room as he takes oath of office. Session is suspended. Session is resumed.
Honorable Members of the House of Representatives, the duly-elected Speaker of the House of Representatives, the gentleman from the 1st District of Leyte, the Honorable Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes.
The Honorable Jaime de Cuervo of the 1st District of Tarlac will administer the oath of office to the Speaker-elect. The Honorable Jaime de Cuervo is requested to come to the Rose Room and administer the oath of office to the Speaker. May I request all the Members of the House to rise. Honorable...
Honorable Jaime de Cuervo.
Natawag si...
Natawag daw sa...
Honorable Jaime de Cuervo is requested.
Natawag.
Yeroy.
Natawag daw si...
Natawag daw.
Natawag.
Natawag.
Adisaw.
Naput bawo bang...
The Honorable Jaime de Cuervo.
Nasabi na boss.
Nasabi na boss.
Nasabi na boss yano.
Ayon.
Niditaw.
Ngayon hindi niyo parang sabi.
Nasabi ko.
Ang si Jaime de Cuervo.
Nasabi ko na boss.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I...
I, Martin Gomez Romualdes.
Of Leyte.
Of the 1st District of Leyte.
Having been elected Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Having been elected Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Hereby solemnly swear.
Hereby solemnly swear.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
I will well and faithfully discharge.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties of my present position.
The duties of my present position.
And of all others.
And of all others.
I may hereafter hold.
I may hereafter hold.
Under the Republic of the Philippines.
Under the Republic of the Philippines.
That I will support and defend.
That I shall support and defend.
The Constitution of the Philippines.
The Constitution of the Philippines.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And that I will obey the laws and legal orders.
And that I will obey the laws and legal orders.
And decrees promulgated.
And the decrees promulgated.
By the duly constituted authorities.
By the duly constituted authorities.
Of the Republic of the Philippines.
Of the Republic of the Philippines.
And that I impose this obligation.
And that I impose this obligation.
Upon myself voluntarily.
Upon myself voluntarily.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
May I request our colleagues in the House to kindly sit down?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is the afternoon already, so I shall not hurry. Ladies and gentlemen, the Members of the House of Representatives of the 19th Congress, I'd like very much to extend my thanks, first of all, to the President of the Republic of the Philippines, Ferdinand Mongong Romualdes Marcos Jr., for having espoused the message of unity and for supporting the House of Representatives, its leadership and the legislative agenda that we shall forge ahead. I am deeply grateful for the presence of the Vice President, Vice President and Secretary of Education, Inday Sara Duterte. Salamat. I, of course, would like to extend my thanks to my family, my mother who is here, thank you so much, and the rest of my family, my brother, my sister-in-law, my children. Thank you for the support and the sacrifices, and of course, mostly to my wife, Congresswoman Yedda. You're my inspiration. Most of all, of course, to all our friends here who made it very, very possible for me to be up here. I'd like to, of course, thank my immediate past predecessor, Speaker Lord Allen Velasco. Beyond the legislative agenda that we had accomplished together, he's too responsible for the refurbishment and the most beautiful session hall that we have today. So thank you, Speaker, and of course, to our Secretary General and the staff who've gotten this all together. I'd like to also thank one and all for your unequivocal support for our leadership for the 19th Congress. Rather than I accept the position, I ask you all to accept the duty of service to the people. For you and I can do this all together as a team, as we had in the previous Congress, and in unity, as they say, there is strength. I'm deeply related beyond words for the trust and confidence you've reposed upon me. You, my distinguished Members of the Chamber, your unqualified support has overwhelmed me, and it is with high hopes that together we shall hurdle the challenges that we face at the stage of the COVID-19 pandemic. We are entering the endemic stages, and we are confident that with the unity that our president has espoused, we can actually overcome the crippling effects of this pandemic and, of course, the political differences that occurred in the recent elections, as well as the global impacts such as the Ukrainian war. The tasks ahead of us may seemingly be daunting, but our synergy is the seed that will nurture us for the ensuing years. We will work together to ensure that the House of Representatives truly embodies the will of the people. We will work hand in hand to ensure the swift passage of House measures that are needed by the people and would support development across all sectors of society, at different levels of government, and with unity of purpose, there is nothing that we cannot do. As your Speaker, I vow to attend to all the concerns of your constituents. I shall try to be as fair as possible and to favor no one. There will be a fair and equitable distribution of resources for the development of our regions regardless of political affiliations. Every Filipino family must be included in any developmental agenda. No one gets left behind. I will keep my office always open, available to all, always open to you, the Members of the House, for we are the House of the People, the majority and the minority. Priority will be given to those willing to share their aspirations with all those constituents with me. And thank you, my dear colleagues, for the honor, for choosing me to serve as your Speaker of the House of Representatives for the 19th Congress. I gladly accept your trust and confidence with a promise that we will collectively work to make the 19th Congress the best it can possibly be. Mabuhay pa kayo lahat. Mabuhay ang Pilipino.
Mister Speaker, I move for the adoption of the 18th Congress Rules of the House of Representatives as amended, as the provisional rules of the House to govern its proceedings until the adoption of the Rules of the House of Representatives for the 19th Congress.
Is there an objection? The Chair hears none. The Rules of the 18th Congress as amended is hereby adopted as provisional rules for the House of Representatives for the 19th Congress.
Mister Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the oath of the Members of the House of Representatives.
All Members, please rise. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name of having been elected to the position of Representative. Hereby solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge to the best of my abilities, the duties of my present position and all others that I may hold hereafter under the Republic of the Philippines. That I will support and defend the Constitution of the Philippines. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. That I will obey the laws, legal orders, and decrees promulgated by the duly constituted authorities of the Republic of the Philippines. And that I impose this obligation upon myself voluntarily without mental reservation or purpose of evasion. So help me God. Congratulations. Welcome to the 19th Congress.
Mister Speaker, I move that we now proceed to the election of the Deputy Speakers of the House of Representatives.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The election of Deputy Speakers of the House of Representatives is now in order. Acting Floor Leader, please proceed.
Mister Speaker, I move that we elect Representative Gloria Macapagal Arroyo as the Senior Deputy Speaker and the following Members as Deputy Speakers of the House of Representatives. Representative Isidro Tiungab, Representative Roberto Vipuno, Representative Camille A. Villar, Representative Christine Singson Mihang, and Representative Raymond Democrito C. Mendoza.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Representative Gloria Macapagal Arroyo is unanimously elected as the Senior Deputy Speaker and the Honorable Representatives Isidro Tiungab, Roberto Vipuno, Camille A. Villar, Christine Singson Mihang, and Raymond Democrito C. Mendoza are unanimously elected as Deputy Speakers of the House of Representatives.
Mister Speaker, I move that we now proceed to the election of the Secretary General.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The election of the Secretary General is now in order.
Mister Speaker, I move that we elect Mister Reginald S. Velasco as Secretary General of the House of Representatives.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Mister Reginald S. Velasco is unanimously elected as Secretary General of the House of Representatives.
Mister Speaker, I move that we now proceed to the election of the Sergeant-at-Arms.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The election of the Sergeant-at-Arms is now in order.
Mister Speaker, I move that we elect Police Major General Napoleon Caballes Taas, retired, a Sergeant-at-Arms of the House of Representatives.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Police Major General Napoleon Caballes Taas, retired, is unanimously elected as a Sergeant-at-Arms of the House of Representatives.
Mister Speaker, I now move that we recognize the Representative from the 2nd District of Cavite, the Honorable Lani Mercado Reviz. the Honorable Lani Mercado Revilla.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, my colleagues in this august chamber, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. I stand before you today to nominate the Honorable Manuel Jose Manix M. Dalipe as Majority Floor Leader of the House of Representatives. The role of the Majority Leader is crucial in the proper and efficient legislative operation. The Majority Leader serves as the Speaker's Chief Lieutenant or Field Commander. He is in charge of directing the deliberations on the floor and melding the diverse philosophies, viewpoints, and agenda of all the members of the House. And while scheduling the House's business is a collective activity, the Majority Leader has a large part in shaping the House's overall agenda and in strategically determining when or in what order should a legislative measure be introduced and deliberated on towards its enactment into law. The person I am nominating today as our new Majority Leader possesses a great ability, skill, knowledge, legislative prowess, and mastery of the legislative mill. As we face the challenges of the 19th Congress, there is no better person who can lead us as our Majority Leader than Honorable Manix Dalipe, a man with proven leadership and integrity, a man who believes in change through cooperation and mutual understanding, a man driven in the advancement of public interest to promote growth and prosperity in the country. It is with immense pride, great honor, and deep confidence that I nominate Honorable Manuel Jose Manix M. Dalipe, the Representative of the Second District of Zambuanga City, as our Majority Leader. Yes, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion on the part of the Majority to elect the Honorable Manuel Jose Manix M. Dalipe as the Majority Leader of the House of Representatives. Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The Honorable Manuel Jose Manix M. Dalipe is elected Majority Leader of the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration of House Resolution Number 74.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Consideration of House Resolution Number 74 is now in order. The Secretary General will now read the title of the resolution.
House Resolution Number 74, Resolution Informing the Senate That the House of Representatives have been, has been organized and has entered upon the exercise of its functions.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption of House Resolution Number 74.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution Number 74. Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. House Resolution Number 74 is adopted. House Resolution Number 75 Informing His Excellency Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos Jr., President of the Republic of the Philippines, that the House of Representatives...
Mr. Speaker?
Yes?
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration of House Resolution Number 75.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Consideration of House Resolution Number 75 is now in order.
House Resolution Number 75, Resolution Informing His Excellency Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos Jr., President of the Republic of the Philippines, That the House of Representatives has been organized and has entered upon the exercise of its functions.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move for adoption of House Resolution Number 75.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution Number 75. Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. House Resolution Number 75 is adopted.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration of House Concurrent Resolution Number 1.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Consideration of House Concurrent Resolution is now in order. The Secretary General is instructed to read the title of the resolution.
House Concurrent Resolution Number 1, Concurrent Resolution Providing for the Senate and the House of Representatives to hold the joint session to hear the message of the President of the Republic of the Philippines.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption of House Concurrent Resolution Number 1.
There is a motion to adopt House Concurrent Resolution Number 1. Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. House Concurrent Resolution Number 1 is adopted. The session is suspended while the House transmits the messages to the Senate. Session is resumed. Ms... Mr. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration of messages from the Senate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Consideration of messages from the Senate is now in order. Secretary General is instructed to read the messages from the Senate.
Message dated July 25, 2022, informing the House that the Senate, on even date, adopted Senate Resolution Number 2, entitled Resolution Informing the House of Representatives That the Senate has been organized with the election of its officers and that this body has entered upon the exercise of its functions for the first regular session of the 19th Congress of the Philippines.
To the Archives.
Message dated July 25, 2022, informing the House that the Senate, on even date, adopted Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1, entitled Concurrent Resolution Creating a Joint Committee of the Senate and the House of Representatives to notify the President of the Philippines that Congress now convene for its first regular session of the 19th Congress of the Philippines is ready to hear his State of the Nation address in a joint session of both Houses.
To the Calendar of Business for the day.
Mr. Speaker, I move for consideration of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. Consideration of Concurrent Resolution Number 1 is now in order. The Secretary General is requested to read the title of the resolution.
Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1, entitled Concurrent Resolution Creating a Joint Committee of the Senate and the House of Representatives to notify the President of the Philippines that Congress now convene for its first regular session of the 19th Congress of the Philippines is ready to hear his State of the Nation address in a joint session of both Houses.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1.
There is a motion to adopt Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1. Is there any objections? The Chair here is none. Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1 is adopted. The Floor Leaders recognized.
Mr. Speaker, in view of the adoption of Senate Concurrent Resolution Number 1, authorizing the creation of a joint committee of both Houses to notify the President of the Philippines that the Congress is convened and ready to hear his message. On the part of the House, I move that the following be appointed to the joint committee: Deputy Speaker Isidro T. Ungab, Deputy Speaker Roberto V. Puno, Deputy Speaker Camille A. Villar, Deputy Speaker Christine Singzon-Mihan, Deputy Speaker Raymond Democrito C. Mendoza.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The members of the House of Representatives so named are hereby appointed to the joint committee and are requested to immediately discharge their responsibility.
Mr. Speaker, in order to give the members of the joint committee time to perform their assigned task and until the House counterpart is ready to report back their accomplishment to this House, I move for the suspension of the session.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The session is suspended. Majority Leader? Session is resumed. Floor Leaders recognized.
Mr. Speaker, may I request our dear colleagues to kindly take their seat? Mr. Speaker, we have received a report from the joint committee that the President has been informed that Congress will convene in a joint session at 4 o'clock this afternoon to hear his State of the Nation address. Mr. Speaker, we wish to remind the members of this chamber that all of us must be here an hour before the joint session at 4 o'clock.
The remarks of the Acting Floor Leader are hereby duly noted.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Secretary General for an announcement.
The Secretary General is recognized.
Members who did not vote for Speaker Ferdinand Martin G. Romualdes are hereby requested to attend and participate in the meeting for the purpose of electing the Minority Leader to be held at 2:15 today, July 25, 2022, at the Minority Leader Conference Room, North Wing Basement. Thank you.
The announcement of the Secretary General is duly noted. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, to give way to the joint session at 4 o'clock this afternoon, I move that we adjourn the session until tomorrow, Tuesday, July 26, 2022, at 2 o'clock in the afternoon.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The session is adjourned until tomorrow, Tuesday, July 26, 2022, at 2 o'clock in the afternoon.
Congratulations, Mr. Speaker.
We request the Deputy Speakers to escort our Speaker to his office, and we have to vacate this room, this plenary hall, immediately. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.